Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 6th, 2018, enclosure A. Do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes? Second, any objections? No, motion passes. Moving along. Next, we're gonna have presentations. Dr. Burke?
We have no presentations this evening.
No presentations? Okay, thank you. Next, we have our public comments section. If anybody in the audience would like to address the school committee, feel free to come up to the podium. Please state your name, address, and you get four minutes to speak.
Jocelyn Post. So, I'm here in regards of having graduation outside. And as class president, I have been helping my fellow classmates bring together all the details that we can in order to make this happen. So, one of the things is that we understand that tickets will have to be limited due to the capacity of the field. Oh, sorry. Due to the capacity of the field, but in this case, tickets wouldn't be limited to just five. So, we accommodate to as many as we can for each student. And also, tickets is one of the biggest issues we have had with having graduation inside, as there's only five tickets to each student. So, people are desperately willing to pay almost a hundred dollars for a single ticket to anyone who's selling it. This issue, this is an issue because people are not guaranteed a seat in the gym either because of the capacity that we can fit. And as the past classes have been growing in the past two to three years, we know that this will cause an uproar if we continue to have graduation inside. Also, we have gathered some pictures that represent the struggles that the families of the class of 2018 have faced while they were waiting in line and having to witness their child walk across the stage through a screen. So, if I can pass these around, that'd be good. And along with all the information that we've gathered, we have received more information concerning the necessities and the cost of the necessities that we would need, such as the sound system, chairs, tents, police security, and even more. So, we've been doing our research and we strongly think that we can make this happen with your support. And we just want to thank all the adults that have been able to help us through this process because it's not easy doing it just with the students. We need as much support as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address? Please state your name and address, and you get four minutes to speak.
Seventeen Madison Ave. in Chelsea. I know all of you up here. Nice to see you all again. I work for the Chelsea Reach program. It's an after-school program to help the kids. And this year, we just found out that the seventh and eighth graders that we had could not enroll in the Chelsea Reach anymore. I think that's unfair. These kids don't have nowhere to go. You can see by all the Chelsea Reach kids, we got graduations, kids that graduated a couple of years ago. And then I heard that in a couple of years, it's winding down. I don't understand why something's winding down that's working. Ninety percent of our students graduate with a diploma. I mean, this is working. And I'm not saying it because I have a job, I have another job. I work as a cop, a union carpenter. I would do this for free. I volunteer all over the city for these kids. This is something these kids need. And we're gonna take it away from them, and when it's working. I mean, I think you all should, you know, really look into this. And hopefully, we can do something and try to get these seventh and eighth graders back. Or if we cut this program, these kids are gonna be in the streets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Rosa Brito. I live in Chelsea. And I'm on behalf of the Chelsea Reach program. And I haven't been part of Reach since the seventh grade. And Chelsea Reach has really helped me as an individual throughout middle school and high school. This is by providing me with a tutor. And this is how I maintained all my honor rolls and high honor rolls as a student in Chelsea High School. And they really helped me with my AP curriculum. And they gave me a place to go when I needed someone to talk to and adults to look up to. So, for the middle schools not to have it is kind of a shame because in a way, it prepared them for, it prepared me for high school myself. And for them not to have it is kind of a loss for them since there are upcoming high schoolers. And it would really benefit them too, as they will have a tutor and somewhere to go and adults to come talk to if they need help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stacy, 126th Street, Chelsea. I am a college graduate. I graduated with my associate's degree because of Reach. Reach has been there since the beginning of high school and everything. And for them to remove middle school, because leadership starts when you're young. When you're young, the youths see the adults, the leaders that are doing well. It motivates them to do well. It motivates them to come every day. Reach is the reason why I graduated. I started high, high school on a rough path. After that, I graduated. I got my associate. I'm on my way to getting my bachelor's in Salem State University. They keep up with me. Kathleen texts me, the leader for the Reach texts me, messages me that I'm on track, that I'm doing good. And for them to have that from middle school is very important amongst me, amongst my cousin, all of my Reach family. I know all of their faces. And to take that away from them is a shame. And I'm very sad about it. And I want us to make this difference in a community so small and make it even bigger each year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kamal Siddique. And I live in Three Clinton Court, apartment 10. And I've been with Reach for four years now. And pretty much, the first time I've heard of it, it was like from a friend. But I've never had a good grade in classes, in any classes I've actually had. But once I started going to Reach, my grades pretty much seemed promising enough for me to be able to go to college. But after finding out that it might end up stopping up, like not be, not be working anymore, it just feels like as if, if my brother's in like, I actually have a little younger brother. He's technically gonna, he might be able to come back again to Reach. But I feel as if this stops, it might just mess up his education. And he technically needs it. And it helps him out to like, it actually inspires him to have some other friends in the Reach program instead of like, too much play. Like, no play means no friggin' fun. But like, you gotta also put some hard work in education. But it also needs like, other people to help him out with the situations he's got.
Hi, my name is Humza Humdi. I live in Three Clinton Court, apartment four, Chelsea, Mass. I'm also a part of Reach. I came here to talk about the Reach being cut off, seventh and eighth graders being cut off. Because I started Reach in seventh grade and I graduated because of Reach. And people keep on mentioning about how Reach like helped them with their homework. It's not only that. Reach also allows the students to have fun. It's not like they stay in the library for like six hours, seven hours. They go into a gym, they get to practice basketball, they got to have fun, they get to make friends. I wasn't very social in like the seventh grade. And Reach actually, when I went there, I made like six new friends right away. And then after, we became closer and closer. And I know a lot of like classmates who weren't Reach, who then, actually were in Reach but then left, who then dropped out. And it's like, Reach, you know, is very helpful. So, I think that we should, we should encourage the kids from seventh and eighth grade to continue coming. Because the, yo, I'm speaking. The seventh and, the seventh and eighth graders is where it starts. When you're, when you're at a young age, like Kamal said, when you're at a young age, that's when the leadership starts. Because if we don't start it at a young age, they go to high school, it's too late, I feel like. So, yeah, thank you.
My name's Denelson Ribero. I live in 105 Marlborough Street. And I started Reach in seventh grade. So, before, before I started Reach, I was doing bad kids with like other, like other, one of my peers, like around in the streets, just doing careless things. And I heard about Reach from a friend. And once I started Reach, I started getting back on my school because from, in middle school, I was not doing good at school. But then, once I started high school, it kept going with Reach. I started getting honor roll and started furthering my education, started getting into AP classes. And Reach really helped me. Because Reach, it's like a second home to me. So, when my parents, when my mom's working, I got, and I don't, I need somebody to talk to, I got Reach. And they helped me with that. And they keep, keep me focused and keep me on track to further my education. And, and I've seen a lot of middle school, middle school kids, they're just like me. And they're, and I can see that Reach is helping them because they've been going to Reach since like, they started now. And now, I know when I say freshman now. And Reach has really put them on track because he was, he's, I could see myself in him. Because he was acting like me when I was a little kid. And, and I, it's also helping me as a young kid to be like, a role model to somebody. And it's like, it's a good feeling. Because living through that experience and helping other kids come up the way you did, it really feels good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Hassan and I live in Clinton Court in Chelsea. I started Reach in seventh grade. I met Denelson in seventh grade. And then like a month later, he told me about Reach. And then I started going. Before Reach, I just used to go home, watch TV, do nothing. But I wasn't really like good in school. Just, I just go because my parents made me go. But like, but like, I didn't really get good grades or anything. I didn't play sports, anything, just go home. But after Reach, I started looking into poetry. I'm good at writing. Now, history, English teachers, they tell me I'm very good at writing. And Bruce helped me with poetry stuff. We go to events in Lawrence, Andover, like Boys and Girls Club. We collaborate with them. And, and now they know us well over there because we do, we rap for them, do poetry, a lot of stuff. So, Reach has helped me since the seventh grade. So, and I'm a senior now and about to grad, I'm about to graduate. So, I think it's gonna work for those kids too. Thank you.
Hi, my name's, hi, my name's Mazrae. I live on 146 Addison Street. I have lived in Chelsea my entire life. And I can honestly say that Reach is the one place where I can get the best support and the best advice of my life. I joined Reach my sophomore year in high school. And I regret not joining it when I had the best opportunity to, which was middle school. I honestly feel like the middle school children deserve the learning opportunity to attend Reach because without Reach, they're forced into the streets. And when they're forced into the streets, that's when bad things happen. That's when they, when people lose their lives, that's when people become criminals. And I feel like if you close Reach down, you're forcing them into that. And that's not what I feel Chelsea should be represented as. Because as children living in Chelsea, we already have stigmas put against us. We already have bad, we already have bad, how do you say it? Yes, we already, we're given bad names. And with Reach, we have the opportunity to, to fight against that. We have the opportunity to be better than that. And if you're taking that opportunity away from the kids, then you're, you're having them lose a learning opportunity. They don't deserve that. Thank you.
My name is Claudia Castillo. I live in 110 Chestnut Street, apartment two in Chelsea. I don't speak English very well, but I'm gonna try my best. I was here to support my daughter and the other kids. They want the graduation outside. I just want to let you know the important thing is this for us. Probably is the first person in our family to graduate. So, I just want you guys consideration about, my family is small, but some people have a big family. And I was in, my sister graduated years ago. It was inside and we can be only four people. And I just want to let you know, this is really important for us. It's not the same, we enjoy outside with the dinner all full. They see the moments over there. We can see our kids, we have more space. The family can, can enjoy together. So, I just want to be here for that, to support that. They can have the graduation outside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcella Castillo. I live on 110 Chestnut Street in Chelsea. I am a senior at Chelsea High. And I'm also the chair of the Youth Commission. I want to say thank you to my mother for speaking. You gave me strength to speak up here today. So, last week, I had gone to a community meeting at the Senior Citizen Center. And what I noticed was that there was a low amount of people there, but also that there were not as many Spanish-speaking people there as well. In Chelsea, we all know that Chelsea's made up by a lot of Spanish-speaking people, especially at the high school. What I also noticed there too is that they had interpreters with headsets for those that didn't speak or understand Spanish. As a community in high school with a majority of Spanish speakers, it only makes sense to have a translator or interpreters here as well in these meetings. Many of these people are parents of students at Chelsea High. And the reason why they probably don't really come here is because of the language barrier. They should feel comfortable in speaking their mind and being involved with what their children are doing in school as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gidaris. I live on 291 Washington Avenue. I actually want to talk about having graduation outside. So, one of the things I wanted to say is that I don't think it's like fair how some people come from like far, probably from like other states or like other countries. And then they get to watch their like loved ones walk across the street, the stage from the auditorium and a screen. I don't think it's, like, put yourself in their shoes. Like, if your son, your daughter was graduating, would you want to watch it in person or would you want to watch it from the auditorium and a screen? And I also wanted to say how like, how like squished and everything felt when we were like in the gym because it's so many people in such a like small space. So, everything just feels so crowded. Yeah, thank you.
Any final comments before we close this section out? Well, thank everybody for coming out and voicing your concerns. We're gonna move along to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I would like to ask Assistant Superintendent Sarah Cantico-Floyd. And the first presentation will be the indicators of success.
Good evening. Tonight, for the indicators of success, you'll notice that the, we've updated for this year. We have a lot of new empty columns because, as you know, as the year progresses, we start to work to fill those. This month, actually, we only have a few indicators as we only have a month of school under our belts. We'll be talking about the monthly indicators, number two and eight, and the mobility rate. So, if you could start on page three. You can see that in the month of September, grades two through five actually met our target of attendance rate of ninety-five percent. And kindergarten and grade seven, as well as grade eight, were very close. We are working hard in the high school grades and in some of the other grades to reach our target. To page six, were our dropout rates. We had five students drop out in the month of September. You'll notice that this year, we're going to be disaggregating this data into four categories. Regular education students, students with disabilities, English language learners. And then another category, which is English language learners with disabilities as well. These, these students that are in this category are not included in the other two categories. Just they're mutually exclusive. So, you can see that five students have dropped out. One regular ed, one student with disabilities, two Ls, and one L with disabilities. On the following page, you can see some detail about those students. There was one ninth grader, one tenth grader, and three eleventh graders. Three went to an adult education program and two went, we were unable to get details on where they went. If you could turn to page nine, to look at our mobility. You'll see that overall, we have gained students at the ELC, elementary and high school grades. We remain pretty even, but basically lost a few students in the middle school. But overall, we have gained ninety students in the district. And five hundred and twenty-nine students have either come or gone already, which is a very high number.
That's actually the highest beginning year mobility rate that we've experienced in a good number of years, over ten years. So, it's, it's definitely the revolving door right now.
Mr. The paddle?
So, not just leave, come or go. So, if you look on page nine at the district total at the bottom, we had three hundred and eight come in and two hundred and eighteen go out. To put that all together is five hundred and twenty-nine kids came or went, like the flow of in and out.
The mobility is both.
September.
Huh?
Since school has started in September.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Garcia?
Do you have any data on the Chelsea Opportunities Academy?
The only thing we have at this point is the enrollment. The enrollment is, as of two weeks ago, it was forty-eight. I believe that they were taking off their waiting list. And so, I can confidently say they probably have fifty, which is their cap for this year. That's all that was budgeted.
Okay. And just so you know, their attendance and their mobility rate and those kinds of things are included in this data as high school students.
Okay, thanks.
So, we are going to transition now. Sarah's going to do a presentation on MCAS. Before she does the MCAS, I am going to ask you to refer to this PowerPoint packet that is in front of you. The first few slides were actually presented at the retreat, the school committee retreat, this past Saturday. So, it's a repeat for those of you that were there. But for those of you that were not there, what we want to go, make sure that you understand is that it's a whole new accountability system. So, the state has basically thrown out the old accountability system, except for at grade ten and also except for science. But the whole accountability system is, is brand new. The names have definitely been changed. So, we no longer have the level one, level two, level three, level four, you know, categorization. If you look at slide two, which Sarah will be pulling up in a moment on the screen, there we go. And it's also on your, your hard copy in front of you. You will see that the categories now in the schools are schools of recognition, meeting target, partially meeting target, focus target support, and broad comprehensive support. So, those are now the target, those are now where schools will be placed. Moving to the next page. What I want to call your attention to is the color coding. So, the state will use criterion reference targets. And really, what they're looking for is, is if you are fifty percent or above, then they consider you doing what you're supposed to do. You're meeting your targets, you're, you're moving towards them or partially moving towards them. I want you to notice that five of our schools are in the green. And so, we're very proud of those schools. When you're in the yellow, the second level, if you flatlined, if you just stayed the same. You didn't improve and you didn't go down. And we have two schools that have flatlined this year, and we will continue to work there. And then Chelsea High School did go down. They are in the red. And at the same time, they know that we are already in a turnaround grant and that we have actually Chelsea Opportunity Academy helping us. In particular, Chelsea High School is in the red for dropout rate and graduation rate, a lower graduation rate. Overall, the district is in the green. It's at fifty-six percent. I want to also call your attention to the following. Remember, at the end of the elementary, at the end of grade four, we have a large number of students who leave us for charter schools. And so, that does hurt our numbers in the middle school. And then, at the end of the middle school years, not only do we have the previous charter school exit as well as the mobility rate in and out, but we also have students who leave at the end of eighth grade for Northeast Vocational School. So, we're always constantly having to close gaps, you know, based on not knowing who the students always are in front of us. Roughly only seventeen percent of our student population start with us in kindergarten and stay with us through grade twelve. So, that's only seventeen percent of our student population. But I think a lot of them are right here. So, next slide, Sarah? So, the takeaways. Here's the big piece on the accountability. Two thousand and eighteen, the accountability is new and it eliminates the ability to make comparisons to the past. So, you can't go back, you can't compare. The names have been changed, the numbers are all different, the algorithm, the formula is all different. We are still, even as educators, we are still wrapping our heads around this new accountability system. More indicators and factors are included in the two thousand and eighteen accountability framework, including chronic absenteeism. So, for example, for the students sitting in front of us, the state now counts, an absence is an absence is an absence. They don't consider excused absences at all. And so, that's a piece in the accountability system. One of the things in the chronic absenteeism that we actually are going to fight is the fact that the chronic absenteeism is, you cannot have more than ten percent absences for the entire year. So, you can't have more than eighteen absences for the one hundred and eighty school days. Our Kelly Elementary School last year was about a three percent chronic absentee rate. Now, that's well below the ten percent. At the say, oh, the two years ago. Last year, two thousand and eighteen, it came in at five percent because they got hit with a very severe flu and stomach bug that went through that entire school. They went up to an absentee rate of five percent. They still were well under ten percent. But because they did not improve on the three percent and go down to two or one percent, they got dinged from the state. And so, we do not believe that this chronic absenteeism is in the best interest of students or school systems. It's actually going to encourage sick children to come to school and spread more flu and more colds and more of everything. And so, when students are ill, we want them to stay home and get better. When staff is ill, we want them to stay home and get better. So, there are a lot of things with this new accountability system that a lot of advocacy needs to take place at the state level. The third bullet, Chelsea Public Schools is improving overall. And I think that's what you need to really, you know, see. We have said over and over, we're more than an MCAS score. We are far stronger than what is being, what- We are far stronger than what is being, what is being looked at. Many times, this whole accountability system is more of a suburban, middle-class accountability system that is geared towards a Newton, a Lexington, a Wellesley, versus a Chelsea, a Rivera, Everett, or an Everett. So we are proving overall. We have two that have remained constant, and one that did not grow. And with more time, we do believe that we are going to improve this accountability system because we will be giving feedback to the state, but also, we, we believe we will be improving the Chelsea Public Schools. Now, with all of that, on the accountability piece, what feeds in to that algorithm? What feeds into that formula that gives us the outcomes of this slide? Well, for the most part, it's MCAS. But there are a lot of other variables that will feed into the accountability system, such as, as I said, chronic absenteeism, graduation rate. If you're offering, you know, higher-level courses such as AP courses, dual enrollment, early college, things on those natures, that nature. However, MCAS is still the biggest piece of the algorithm, because everything is weighted in this algorithm. And so now, what we will present to you are the outcomes on the, on the MCAS for two thousand and eighteen. Again, very difficult to compare one year to the other. This is a whole new system moving forward, but we will give you a little bit of a comparison. Ms. Kent?
I'm going to take you through some of our results. I would ask that you hold your questions to the end. I'm happy to answer them, but I'd rather go straight through and then go back and answer any questions you may have. So MCAS two point O, just a few reminders. MCAS two point O is the new computer-based version of the MCAS that was given in grades three through eight last year. The high school is moving towards this, actually, in the spring. They will also be taking MCAS two point O in ELA and math on a computer. But these results are from last spring, and therefore, the high school, I will talk about the high school results, but that is a leg, what we call a legacy test. So the purpose behind MCAS two point O, it is online, it is more rigorous in testing college readiness, in that it can be technology-enhanced, and, and it can just do more things than a paper and pencil test. And just to remind you, our old legacy tests have the ratings of advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. The new lingo is exceeding expectations, meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting expectations.
I also want to, just for the students that are here, you will start to, they'll be phasing in the new MCAS test. You will be moving towards this, actually, in the spring. So if you're a tenth grader, you're going to be taking the new test, so.
And just, this is a little sample of what parents will see. It is, the parent reports are showing the different levels. It is all standardized now, so no matter what test you are taking, a five hundred is meeting expectations, whether it's the ELA or the math. That was not true with the legacy tests. It is getting a lot more standardized and comparable across both subjects and age groups. And similarly, parents will be given a lot more detail about how their child performs. For example, at the bottom here, that would tell the, the parent exactly how the child scored on every question, as well as within strands of the curriculum. So I'm going to give you some district-wide results for ELA. In these slides, the black bar is the state throughout the, throughout the presentation. Red is this year's results, and yellow is last year's results. So we did take MCAS two point O, this one piece, we did take last year, so we can see what, how we are doing compared to our results last year. As you can see, we're not where we would like to be compared to the state, but we have grown in ELA in all of our grades compared to the previous year. This is as we're adopting and preparing students and adopting our curriculum. This is a, as I quickly wanted to show you, the average scaled score across the state is, is five hundred, which is the meeting expectations. We are approaching that in various levels in different grade levels. ELA mean student growth percentile, SGP, is how students have grown compared to their score last year. And as you can see, in grade four, we are very, three-tenths of a point from the state there. And excitingly, in grade seven and eight, we exceeded the state mean. Grade five continues, as we were discussing just earlier, grade five continues to be an area of improvement that we need to work on.
But again, that grade four high point that is very close to the state, we lose about a hundred and twenty-five students to the charters. So grade five is a dip.
And then we build back up, and as you can see, we have success. We are outgrowing the state in grade seven and eight. Math, again, the black bar is the state, red bar is our, how we are doing this year, yellow bar is how we did last year. Again, in some grades, such as grade three, we are getting closer to the state. We are also trying to do so in other areas. You'll see that we have grown in most grade levels as compared to last year. Average scaled scores, again, five hundred being where the state is across the board. And student growth percent, mean student growth percentile. You can see in grade four, we're exceeding the state. We take that dip in grade five that we're working on, and then we approach it back again when we get to grade eight. So the legacy tests. So as you know, in science and in grade ten, we are still taking legacy tests, and as Dr. Bork has said, we're moving towards MCAS two point O, but we're not there yet. Next year, at this time, I'll be reporting on that for the high school.
And it's all on computer?
Yes. Which the students are used to, right? So middle school science, again, black being the state, red this year, yellow last year. We are growing against ourselves, but not meeting the benchmark that we would like to with the state. At the high school, science continues to be a bit of a struggle. We are working hard to increase those biology scores. Everybody needs to study their biology. And in ELA, similarly, we are working hard with our new configurations and a lot of our I block and all those things to increase. Math. And in SGP, student growth percentile, we're now using the mean. You'll see that in ELA, we are exceeding the state in growth, and in math, we have improved from last year, but we're so lacking. Questions?
Yeah.
Yes?
Browns and yellow, clocks and yellow, okay? And so, how are these scores compared to last year and the year before? Comparable.
Back here, are you, are you mentioning this?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll answer that. You can't, you can't compare because we, last year, if you remember, we talked about level one, level two, level three, all of the, they threw that out. So now, what we have is, are you meeting your target, or are you partially meeting? Are you, are you approaching that, are you getting to the fifty percent minimally? So whole new system. Next year, you, we can say, how do we compare to last year? But we can't do it this year. And they have, the commissioner of education has said, make sure everyone in your community understands, you cannot go back. It is from this point forward.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, because I did get some questions thrown at me about the MCAS and how we were doing with that, and I said I'd look into it.
Well, you know, I think that, and I think, you know, your answer is, number one, just like my opening day speech, we are far more than an MCAS score. And so it's important for us to keep that message out there. At the same time, we're doing exceedingly well in many of our schools, and we have a couple of schools, one in particular, that we need to focus and give, give a lot of support to. At the same time, they're also dealing with many complex issues, which, you know, inform that data. Yeah.
So if we don't improve with this score next year at the high school, will we be in trouble with the state?
You know what? That's a really good question. The accountability framework doesn't do that really anymore. What it does is, it means, it takes you to in need of focused and targeted support. So, and you can be in need for, you know, one of the, the bullet points up there. Or you can go to broad comprehensive support, but it just means you need support. They are finally getting to the point, Frank, Mr. DePato, where they are listening to the fact that we have been banging down the door, and Chelsea has been one of the loudest voices banging down the door, that you cannot compare us, and that we're doing a really good job. And what we need is, we don't need policing and bashing in the news media, we need support, and we need finances so we can continue programs. Because many times, we need to cut programs because, not because we want to, we have no choice, such as we cut all of citizen schools, which was grade five through eight. So everybody is feeling the pain of the budget, and that's why I keep harping every single school committee meeting. I need advocacy from everyone up at that state house.
I just want to continue on. There was an article in the Herald last week, two weeks ago, about forty percent of the Boston schools all need help with the MCAS scores. I did see that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
And I guarantee, they're probably, those forty percent are the schools that are welcoming and educating all students, inclusive and not keeping anybody out.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kent, I have, so, I've probably asked this before, but just for audience purposes and at home. So are ELL students, so they just came here and they take the MCAS, they are scored the same way as a student that's been here?
In year two. Year one, they get one-year grace. In year two, yes, they are scored the same way as everyone else. And they struggle. It, it is hard to take a test in a language you do not know and succeed. However, I can say that when you compare how our English language learners are doing compared to other English language learners in the state, we do very well.
I challenge any of us to take a grade ten MCAS exam. The legacy, the tradition.
In German.
In English. No, I'll even give it to you in English, and you tell me what your score is, so.
You gave us one at a retreat.
I might do it again soon.
Any other questions? Ms. Alfaro?
So, in, Ms. Burke, you did mention at the school committee retreat that there is legislation that it is advocating on these changes of DESI. If we can find out what the legislation is, and then for the students here, if you can continue to support us to advocate for the pieces of legislations that are out there through your advocacy, we can have those changes, because if you can hear here right now, there will be a lot of changes that are going to be impacting everything, you know, from getting those bad grades on the MCAS, that will reflect on the scholarships. So everything is going to be reflect, will be reflecting. The other thing is also, I will not take the challenge, because I'm not going to flank on the English one, or math, but I do would like to maybe, to advocate back for bilingual education. I know we have Caminos, and thanks God that we got it extended in to other levels, but that's Chelsea. Imagine for other cities that they don't even have Caminos, but it would be great to have a bilingual education back in our communities.
Any other questions for Mrs. Kent? Mr. Maransky?
How you doing, Sarah? I'm kind of glad that they, they did change the MCAS score, because I thought it was very unfair toward the inner-city kids, you know, especially the city of Chelsea, because everybody learns in different, you know, different ways. And we, in our circumstances here, much different than Newton and Wellesley. The question I have for you, you mentioned the ten percent of being absent.
Yes. Chronic absenteeism.
No, what's the penalty? If a kid's out eighteen days or nineteen days out of a year, how does that go against the school? I know.
Sure. So what happens is, it's, it's ten percent of their days. And the reason it's ten percent of their days is if they are here for a full one hundred and eighty, that's eighteen, obviously, ten percent. But if they come in in the middle of the year, say they come in on the hundredth day, they have ten percent, which would be ten absences allowed. These are excused and unexcused absences, like just if they are not in the seat, for whatever reason, they count, that counts as an absence. So what happens is, the entire school population is looked at and found out what percentage of kids are chronically absent, which means absent more than ten percent of their days. That percentage needs to improve over time in order for us to receive points in this formula for accountability when this rate is found, this percentage. So Dr. Bork was mentioning the Kelly School, is it like five percent? We have some schools in the teens, we have some schools, you know, it, it depends on the different schools, but it, it depends also, it just matters whether the kid is there or not there. It doesn't matter if they were, have doctor's notes or extenuating circumstances or anything. Eighteen days for a kid who's enrolled for the full year.
Oh, that's, that could be an unfair policy.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes.
Another thing I just.
Especially for students who are, are translating for their parents at appointments, or support, or working, or supporting younger siblings, there, there's a lot of reasons why some students miss school.
Yeah. It, it's definitely disproportionately not in favor of urban gateway communities like us.
And we get credit for reducing that number every year. So the example that Dr. Burke gave of, we were at three percent, and we went to five, but we don't get any points because we increased.
But yet, we were still well under ten percent. Go figure. My frustrations.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Ms. Kent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Madam Chair, I will commend to the record the personnel update. Enclosure B, we have twenty-five new hires, and we have twenty-six resignations, retirements, and terminations. No promotions and transfers this month, although I am going to announce a couple in a moment that came through today, and no leaves of absences. I am also commending to the record our enrollment report. We have six thousand one hundred and nineteen students in the district. We have one hundred and eighty-one students that are in outplacement, for a total enrollment of six thousand three hundred. And please note that that's a decrease for, of about two hundred students compared to this time last year. And that is commended to the record as enclosure C. I would like to also make mention of the fact that those of you that were unable to attend the school committee retreat on Saturday, you missed out on a wonderful and entertaining presentation on the, my report on the progress towards our five-year plan that is in front of you. Certainly, any of you that were not there that have questions, you, you can reach out to me, and we can sit down and go through it. We had a, a very good icebreaker looking at chapter three in the, in your, in the school committee, rules and regulations, which is the ethics component. And then you also have in front of you, I gave out on Saturday, the overview booklet that has been edited for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. And again, that is in Spanish and English, and it is being distributed predominantly at the Parent Information Center this year. We're not really giving it out to all faculty and staff, but we'll have sufficient copies at, at the main office of each of the schools. I also want to make mention that Prethee, Assistant Superintendent Prethee Johari is not here this, this evening. We sent her to Chelsea High School because they had their cultural festival, and she was sending these amazing pictures. So we will make sure to get those pictures into the superintendent's updates, and that if anybody else has any pictures, feel free to send them. Then I would also like to mention that we have some promotions that have gone on at central office. You know that we are in the midst of this two-year succession planning for various positions. Our assessment director, Anne Marie La Puma, will be retiring in the next few months, and so I am, it's bittersweet that I will be losing Terry as my administrative assistant, and she will be taking Anne Marie's position. At the same time, I'm thrilled for Terry, and I'm also thrilled for me, because I also have moved Veronica and promoted her to Terry's position. So a lot of shifting going on. This won't officially take place till around October twenty-ninth, but we're in the, that timeframe of, you know, everybody's learning, everybody else is job. Terry will remain the school committee clerk for the Terry will remain the school committee clerk for the, for this full year. And then, moving into Veronica's spot, we have hired Carol Dyer, the clerk at the Early Learning Center. So, all of this is in an email to you. When you get a chance, you can, you can take a look at, at that. And then, I'd like to say welcome to our two this year, two this year, I love it. Our high school, Chelsea High School School Committee Representatives, Alicia Smith and Manuel Tache. Close? Okay. Would you like to just briefly tell you a little bit about yourself, just so everyone can get to know you a little bit? You have to speak into the microphone.
So, like you heard, my name is Manuel Tache. One, a little background about me, I came five years ago to the United States. I was one of the students that was implemented in the ELA program at Brown Middle School. And it was a really big change for me because I was able to really further my education. I was able to learn the language. And I'm just really happy about all the opportunities I'm having in this country. And I'm just glad to be working here with you.
My name's Alicia Smith. I was born and raised in Chelsea my whole life. Currently, I am the treasurer for Chelsea Youth Commission and I'm also the chair captain at Chelsea High School.
So, Madam Chair, my last piece of information tonight is, is certainly the communication of various activities for the next month. As we all know, Monday is a holiday. It's coming up on a three-day weekend and the weather is supposed to be beautiful. There is no school for students on Monday, October twenty-second. That is the Teacher Professional Development Day, so staff will report, but students do not need to. November first, of course, is our next school committee meeting. And then, I've been asked by the Zonta Club of Chelsea to announce a fall fundraiser that they are having that really actually sounds like a lot of fun. And it's a fundraiser that will take place at Casa Lucia in Riviera, and that will be on November fourth. And certainly, the Zonta Club has always been such a wonderful support of the Chelsea Public Schools in terms of scholarships. Also, they provide gift cards to our homeless students for, for meals, for Thanksgiving meals and holiday meals in December. And so, they are a wonderful organization. So, their fundraiser that goes towards these activities is going to take place on November fourth. And it is, I think it's like a murder mystery theater, dinner theater. So, it's Lizzie Borden and the Forty Wax. And it's a buffet dinner, I know. It's the show, it's going to be a show and raffles. And so, I would encourage you to take a look, and we'll put this on our website as well. But it, it looks like a lot of fun. Madam Chair, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. Moving along, two committee reports. So, we're going to start with Budget and Finance Subcommittee Meeting Minutes. Ms. Enriquez?
The meeting started at five forty PM with the introductions of the new Secretary Director, Ms. Monica Lenboe. She briefly outdated us of the hiring and the DC year report, which she would ask for an extension until the end of October. We reviewed the budget transfers by the members present and the motion to adjourn the meeting was made by Ms. Velez at six ten. So, that's the report for the budget subcommittee.
Do we have a motion to accept the Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of the Budget and Finance?
Motion to accept.
Any objections? No. Motion passes. Next, we have Human Resources Subcommittee. Mr. Hernandez, can you read us the minutes?
For Human Resources?
Yes, please.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
So, for the Chelsea School Human Resource Subcommittee, present was Lucia Enriquez, Jeanette Velez, Anna Hernandez, Jacenial Faro Alvarez. Also in attendance were Superintendent Mary Burke, Human Resources Director Tina Sullivan, and Deputy Superintendent Linda Bro. The purpose of this meeting was for the process, for the superintendent's evaluation and began at six thirteen PM. Superintendent Burke reviewed the process of the two-year evaluation cycle. This cycle would be a formative evaluation and the retreat for Saturday, September twenty-ninth. Committee would judge her on what she and her staff have done over the past year. Evidence would be presented and, and each member would be given a worksheet to provide the ratings of the superintendent. The worksheets would be combined into one document for presentation to the superintendent and then to the full school committee. The meeting adjourned at six forty PM.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the Human Resources Subcommittee Meeting Minutes? Second. Any objections? No. Motion passes. Mr. Hernandez, if you could continue.
So, for the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee, it was held Thursday, September thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. In attendance was Puli Hernandez, Mr. Richard Moransky, Mr. Frank DePato, Chairwoman Jeanette Velez, Superintendent Mary Burke, Principal Ron Schmidt, and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Sarah Kent. Meeting was called to order at five thirty PM. At this point, a motion was made to have item two go first. First item on the agenda was the Chelsea Opportunity Academy graduation requirement. Mr. Schmidt gave an overall review of the graduation requirement for students who are in the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. He also took the chance to explain on how it's running so far and how their schedule works. Second item on the agenda was homeschooling petitions. Assistant Superintendent Kent introduced petitions from two families, the Hassan family and the Gaspar family. All six petitions were reviewed and found to meet all approval factors. And the meeting was adjourned at six PM.
So, do we have a motion to accept the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee Minutes? Motion to accept. Second. Any objections? Motion passes. Next, we have Mr. Moransky with Policy and Procedures.
In attendance was Frank DePato, Puli Hernandez, Richie Moransky, Jeanette Velez, Superintendent Dr. Mary Burke, and Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent. The meeting was called to order at six PM. Graduation policy was discussed. Dr. Burke gave information on concerns that need to be reviewed in order to have the graduation outside, including cost, rental of chairs, sound system, seating capacity, number of graduating seniors, facilities, weather and rain dates, and protecting the new turf. Members discussed moving the graduation from indoor to outdoor. Next was discussed was the bullying policy in plan. Dr. Burke presented the updates to the bullying, to the bullying policy in plan. Mr. Hernandez moved to bring the bullying policy in plan to the school committee to be approved. Mr. DePato seconded the motion. The meeting was adjourned at six fourteen PM.
So, we have a motion to accept the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Meeting Minutes?
Motion to accept.
We have a second?
Second.
Any objections? No. Motion passes. Next, we're going to move on to our student rep reports.
The new principal, Mr. Math, oh, the new principal, Mr. Matthews, has been consistently walking the hallways, asking students for their names and trying to memorize them. Rules are being emphasized in the classrooms and hallways concerning food and electronics. We have morning announcements every single day, contents are sports, clubs, and games, as well as birthdays. Seniors are in one word, stressed. As college applications approach, a lot of students are being scheduled to meetings with their counselors and talk about essays, finances, and meeting deadlines. Unexpected tutoring. Seniors have been recently paired up with freshmen in homeroom classes concerning I-bloc. The goal of such action is to allow freshmen to feel welcomed in the school and have somebody to look up to without thinking seniors are mean. This also allows them to have somebody to go to in case they need academic assistance. And MCAS tutoring has started with seniors helping lowerclassmen. Creation of a new club. The school is currently supporting a new club that will be held after school for tutoring and mentoring. The club is not only surrounding regular issues like academics, but also involvement. It is aimed to have two branches, one to assist English-speaking students and one for English learners. The goal is to allow students to see the true potential of school and outside school activities, provide support for students learning the language, get them involved, and eradicate the habit of thinking school as an academic burden. The performing arts students have the opportunity to be placed in their performing arts class for I-bloc. Concert has split into two classes to have twenty-five students be able to partake, and there's also a selected choir with forty. The band has also had a selected I-bloc for their students that cannot play their instrument during classes to fit their schedule. With there being such positivity for them, they have also been able to showcase what they've been doing as in playing for the parent-teacher festival that was today and performing during I-bloc. Ms. Chick, the band director, has also been able to make a prep band for the school and ban students to eventually be able to play at home games. The fall season is halfway done. Sports have already shown more than what we expected. Games have been won and lost in the volleyball team, soccer, football, but the Aurora around them is indisputably positive. The football team has pushed each other in the season. They now have two players of the week for each game and two weekly team dinners and with the cheerleaders join them.
Do you have something to add? No? You're all set. Okay. Thank you, guys. In one breath. Okay, moving along. Unfinished business, we don't have any, so we're going to go right into new business. Consideration and action to accept a gift of one hundred and ninety-two pocket calculators from Cradle's to Crayons for distribution to the Chelsea Public School students. Cradle's to Crayons had in excess of model KK four oh two pocket calculators and offered to donate the calculators to the Chelsea Public Schools for students. These calculators will be distributed to the schools at the Mary C. Burke Complex. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Moransky?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Moving along.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, a late motion.
Okay, Mr. Moransky?
Consideration and action to accept a homeschooling petition of the Dolof Grattan family for their child Panther Dolof Grattan. Reason is, petitions were reviewed by the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee tonight and have found that they have met all approval factors.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to accept a late, motion of Mr. Moransky?
Motion.
Yeah, second?
Second.
Yeah. Any objections? No? Okay. So, we'll move on and we'll do this one first. So, consideration and action to accept the homeschooling petition of the Dolof Grattan family for their child Panther Dolof Grattan. Explanation: Petitions were reviewed by the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee and found to have met all approval factors. So, we, do we have a motion to accept the homeschooling, homeschooling petition of the Dolof Grattan family?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Okay. Any objections? No? Okay. So, motion passes. Next, Mr. Hernandez moves to accept the homeschooling petition of the Gaspar family for their children, Chloe Gaspar and Michael Gaspar. Petitions were reviewed by the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee and found to have met all approval factors. Do we have a motion to accept the homeschooling petition for the Gaspar family?
Motion.
Do we have any objections? No. Motion passes. Next, Mr. Hernandez moves to accept the homeschooling petition of the Hassan family for their children, Zainab Osman, Aisha, and Sophia Gal. Petitions were reviewed by the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee and found to have met all approval factors. Do we have a motion to accept the homeschooling petition of the Hassan family for their children?
Motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any objections? No. Motion passes. Okay. Dr. Burke?
Madam Chair, I just want the record to show that Ms. Garcia has left the room.
Okay. Thank you. Next. Consideration and action to support the letter from Superintendent Burke to the Commissioner O'Reilly opposing Excel Academy's proposed expansion by fifty-six seats from Chelsea. Do we have a motion in support of the superintendent to send the letter to Commissioner O'Reilly?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any objections? And, Dr. Burke, also, I wanted to add an endorsement to that letter as well as Chairwoman of the school committee.
We'll format it for your signature.
Okay, thank you.
School Committee Woman Garcia should, yeah. Just so that the students know, and this can be a learning experience for them, the reason why Ms. Garcia had to leave is because this action item dealt with Excel Charter Academy, and she is actually a teacher at Excel Charter Academy. So, it's a conflict of interest for her to be even in the room when the motion comes forward to a vote.
So, next item. Consideration and action to accept one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-four from a federal impact aid for displaced students grants for the school year 2017-2018. In late September, the Chelsea Public School District was notified, along with sixty-nine other mass school districts, that they had received a federal impact aid for displaced students grant award for expenditure in the 2018 school year. Chelsea's notice, along with all other districts, was received after this fiscal year had finished. DESI held a conference call on Friday, September twenty-eighth, 2018, to help districts identify which prior year charges could be reallocated to the grant funds and how to account for them as part of the end-of-year report, which is submitted to DESI each year. During the phone call, DESI acknowledged the highly unusual circumstances of this grant. The grant funds will be used to cover special education costs already incurred by the district in school year 2018, including the cost of staff and contractual services in support of students displaced from Hurricane Maria. A total of thirty students have enrolled in Chelsea schools after being displaced from Puerto Rico and the Caribbean. Several of these have been identified as being in need of special education services. These new funds are separate and apart from the proximity of one hundred and fifty-five thousand in-state funding that has been previously accepted by the school committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars from a federal impact aid for displaced students grant for school year 2017-2018, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Moransky?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Next, moving on to communications in the back. So, we have two communications from our Chelsea High Athletic Department. One is, we were trying to co-op with Pope John for our cross-country, but that didn't work out. There was a new AD that came to Pope John, so there were some changes made. And also, we were scheduled to play them for the Thanksgiving home game, but it seems that Pope John had another school also pending, so we will play Brighton. And the other communication is from Tricia Williams. She had requested a waiver of user fee charges associated with permit to use the baseball field at the Mary C. Burke Elementary Complex on September fifteen for the purpose of conducting a track and field day to raise scholarship funds for Chelsea High School students. The request is approved after considering that the program is for not-for-profit Chelsea-based organizations serving the Chelsea community, specifically Chelsea Youth. And then, our last communication is the letter that Dr. Burke is sending to the Commissioner and advocating we're not getting those fifty-six additional seats in Chelsea. I just want to point out in that, in this fiscal year, the City of Chelsea Charter School Bill is nearly fourteen point eight million. And with those fifty-six seats added, that will cost us another eight hundred thousand in the coming years. So, just want to put that, so do we have a motion to accept these committee, these communication reports to come into the committee?
Motion to accept.
Okay. Second. Objections? No. Mr. DePato?
Yes. I would like to address section eight.
Yes, I would like to address Section Eight. And that's a letter from the athletic director. It was my opinion that we were playing Pope John on Thanksgiving, which would have been great, and that game fell through, and we're now playing Brighton. But whatever happened to Matinon, that we played for eight, nine, ten years in a row? What happened to Matinon?
I'll have to follow up with her, but if I remember my conversation with her last spring, you know, because she scheduled with Pope John last spring, it was Matinon did not want to play us, so.
Matinon didn't want to play us?
Mm-hmm. But I will follow up and double-check.
You're welcome. Okay. Any final comments from the committee before we adjourn? Mr. Hernandez?
So, I just wanted to mention, you know, our past meeting, you know, you made a recommendation of requiring all members to attend the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. I just wanted to know if there's a specific date that that's going in effect?
Well, we've been in talk with Mass because we want to make sure we're still following protocol. I think emotions were running high that last meeting. And, but, everybody's always welcome to these meetings. Today was rare that they both fell. The two subcommittees fell on the same day. But usually, those are on Wednesdays and then the ones you attend are on Thursdays. In January, we get a chance to pick and change, so you don't have to stay. If you would like for the next year to move to Budget and Finance, you're able to do that. Yes, we still have to split. Ms. Carlisle?
I'd like to congratulate the girl for her thirtieth anniversary in the city of Chelsea and thank her for all the wonderful things they're doing for our community.
Ms. Garcia?
I'd like to address the youth in the room. And as an educator and being in your shoes seven years ago, I did the calculations, I graduated high school seven years ago. It is, it brightens up my day and warms up my heart to see so many youth I'm sad everyone else left, but I'm sure they want to get to bed because tomorrow's another school day. But honestly, thank you for coming out here. While we cannot promise, we're keeping Reach. We will, as a team, discuss that and see what we can do. I will say that when growing up, I didn't have a program like Reach, but I did have my goals and my dreams and my desire to keep pushing forward. And that is what helps me stay grounded. I am one of five children, my family's from Puerto Rico, and I stand here as the youngest vice-chairwoman on the board. And, again, just use your dreams and your goals and your family to push you forward. So, thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.